Okay, good evening everybody. We've got these two candidates here vying for their chance to become the next Harbour Ward councillor for the Hutt City Council. But with every election, there's always one thing stepping in their way, and that's your vote. Okay, good evening everybody and welcome to It's in the Ballot here in Harbour Ward. We're in the Morua Community Hall. Now, in an unusual aspect, I'll be honest, we never planned for this. Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, our head of state, has died this morning, New Zealand time. So we would like to sit down there and offer some condolences for it. And we'll do a minute silence in commemoration of Queen Elizabeth, who reigned on the throne for 70 years. And then we'll talk a little brief bit about her history with New Zealand. And then we'll get to our brilliant candidates who are out here tonight to get your votes. So let's take a one-minute silence. Okay, thank you everybody for that. Now, Queen Elizabeth has been on the throne and was ascended in 1952. That would have been before most of my parents' generation was born. My grandma and my grandparents were alive at the time. And I think Dad's brother Richard would have been born on a more personal note if that gives an idea for the family who are watching. Queen Elizabeth has made various trips to New Zealand. She made a trip in, was it, 1953 to 1954, where she did a big tour of New Zealand. She was here for the Tengai disaster. And my family has the really weird part of a jinx of somehow missing the train. And that's on both sides of the family. My grandmother and Auntie Karen, my oldest auntie on mum's side, were booked on the train but never went. And my great-grandmother, which is my grandfather's mother, was booked also on the train to go and meet her first granddaughter. But for somewhere, no, in her case, she had to stay late at work, working for DC and Smith in Cuba Street, which later became Farmers, which is now Greater Wellington Regional Council's office. The Queen gave a tribute for the Tengai train disaster. And we appreciate with that, as she did her Queen's Speech from New Zealand. She also did the Queen's Speech from the Throne in January in 1954, when Prime Minister Sir Keith Holyoke was the Prime Minister at the time, he wasn't Sir at the time. She made another trip to New Zealand in 1963 for celebrations for the Treaty of Waitangi. 1970 came over for the 200 years since Captain James Cook discovered New Zealand. In 1974, she attended the Commonwealth Games in Christchurch and also went to Waitangi. In 1977, she made a trip over here for a 25th Jubilee, and it would have, where she visited 11 centres around New Zealand. Made another trip in 1981 to visit, it was, it was, oh, to follow the visit for the Commonwealth Heads of Government in Melbourne. In 1986, the visit was for an extended visit to Nepal in Australia. The visited, the Queen also visited New Zealand. This is from Government Houses website. In 1990, she came over for the Commonwealth Games in Auckland and celebrate 150 years of the signing of the treaty. And this is the big one that she did. In 1995, the Queen attended, was it, attended for the Heads of Government. And this is the first time in New Zealand history, we had a head of state personally put their signature on the bill. It was the Waikato, was it, Royal Pato Claims Settlement Act 1995. It is the only piece of legislation that has the Queen's signature personally giving it royal assent. So it's something pretty big. And also, she made another visit in 2002 to celebrate 50 years on the throne for a 50th Jubilee. She has been some remarkable things. The first royal family member to go over the Rumataka Hill Road by road in 1953 or 54 in that tour. And the one thing I like that she actually knows how to do is change oil on a car. So I personally can do that, but I think that is something we should always make the point of there, the fact that she knew her way under the bonnet. So I don't, that's my bit I can give for the Queen's tribute. And you rest in peace. Would our candidates like to give any comments? Yeah, got mics down there. Yeah. Comments on the Queen passing? I mean, I feel it's appropriate since we're all here.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it's on. They're hardwired on.
Is it on, working? Oh, Kia ora everybody. Yeah, it's arroha mai for the Queen. It's, yeah, very sad. She has played a part in all of our lives, I think, just reigning for that long. And yeah, life without her is going to be quite different. And having the third king, Charlie, is going to be a different thing too. So, but a sad day to wake up and hear that news, even after seeing her welcome in the 15th Prime Minister to England. And that was only two days before she passed. So, yeah.
Her last official duty.
Yeah, last official duty. Thank you.
I second that. You know, she was an incredible woman and an amazing leader and an inspiration to all of us. It's a really sad day. I've been doing a lot of reflection about, about Queen Elizabeth and what an amazing human that she was. So it's lovely to be acknowledging her.
Thank you. And thank you everybody for coming here tonight and doing the minute silence. As I say, this wasn't scripted. This got basically was planned literally at last minute to do it. But that's what you have to do when you have your Queen move on. Okay, so let's sit there and start off with Tui with your opening statement on why you should be elected the councillor for another three years for Harbour Ward.
Kia ora everybody again. Why I'm standing and why I'd like to be elected again to represent this ward is with the proposed government reform on the horizon, I believe now more than ever, our community does need a consistent, strong voice at the table, an experienced voice and an experienced person in leading the direction of our city. Focusing on getting the basics right for our city. Our city has a great plan in place to go ahead into the future. And working with the community is my passion. And it's to bring the city's vision to fruition. And the right person needs to be leading the charge. So I'd value your vote.
Help, I do, yeah. Next up, we've got Petra.
Kia ora. I live in Eastbourne, work in Patoni and have done for most of my life. I have decided to stand for council because I'm worried, I'm worried about excessive rate increases. And it's an out of control spending. I believe that we need more commercial now, some business acumen at the council table. And that is something that I can offer. I have had a successful career as a senior manager in the health sector across both private and public primary and secondary care. I feel passionate about our city. And I would love the opportunity to stand on behalf of all of you and make a difference. Thank you.
Okay. Now, we do not have an electorate video tonight. I did not have time to sit there and do that within the last 48 hours. We've had a bit of a hectic schedule, trying to get a few things running into line. And that was unfortunate thing we have not done. But for a brief description of where you would be if you're in Harbour Ward, if you're in the suburbs of Cora Cora, Patoni, Morua, Eastbourne, Lowry Bay, Dais Bay, Seaview, that's the area you'll be voting for. Now, if you're in Patoni, now, I don't mind being corrected, how many members are on the community board in each one? Is it six? Yeah, six. Okay. So if you're in Patoni, you've also got to vote, you've got six positions to vote for on the Patoni community board. And if you're in Eastbourne, you've also got six positions to vote for on the Eastbourne community board.
Sorry, five for Eastbourne.
Sorry?
Five for Eastbourne.
Five? Oh, it's only five. Okay, I learn something new every night. And yes, with an electorate video, I would have ironed out those, ironed that all out. And for voting for those, for those, all the positions mentioned tonight, you'll be using the voting system first past the post. So you'll be giving your tics out. And you'll, if you get your numbers, you leave that for the regional council, if that's the easiest way to sit there and explain that. So we're going to take a quick break. I'm going to run to the other side of the studio. And we're going to sit there and start opening up the ballot box quest. Okay, and welcome back. So with this round here, we have, was it, carefully selected locked questions in ballot boxes here for candidates to pick. Will we go, okay. Now, with the, with the picking of the boxes, the candidates go one by one picking what number. We don't use the term here, do you take the money or the bag? We work on the term of the basis, it's called, you chose it, you brought it, now you're going to answer it. So that's what we do there. Now, with the theme like just similar to the TV show, It's in the Bag, we have two baby questions. One of them is dodge the question, the other one is defer to another candidate. If a candidate selects that question, they get to keep that card as a Get Our Jail Free card. And then they pick up a new card, no, a new box, and answer the question from that box. And at some point during the show, they can use that Get Our Jail Free card if they need to use it. However, the principle behind that is we don't want our candidates using it. Because if they're using it, that means they're trying to hide from answering the questions. Now, that makes complete sense? Okay. So Petra, what box number do you want to start off with?
Twenty-four, please.
No problem. Okay. And on the, on the question sheet, it's question number 27. Do you think climate change should be the number one concern at the ballot box?
Well, it's definitely up there and it should be a top priority. And I've been pleased to hear over the past few weeks, almost all the candidates are campaigning on this issue. If we don't all work together to reduce carbon emissions, we will be in pretty bad shape. The impacts are becoming increasingly clear, especially along our coast. It is about big thinking, but it's also about thinking smaller and quick wins in the low hanging fruit. How can we simple, how can we in simple ways engage with our communities to make small changes? Small changes by many can make a big difference. And this in turn gains into momentum. I keep hearing from the council, climate change is coming. It's not coming, it's here.
Thank you. We're going to get a round of applause. Okay, what box number, Tui?
Number 10, please.
So second box for this one. You've got defer the question to another candidate. Gee, last night we got to 25 boxes and we never got to them. So and tonight, it's on the second one. So what box number, replacement number would you like to pick?
Okay, number 18, please.
Okay, 23 on the question sheet. There's currently no funding allocated to physical work for climate change adaptation. All seems to be in the pipeline as planning. Communities are looking for councils, for the council, for the creation of a multi-party, community-led, community-funded task force to accelerate the impact assessment and action. Actions. Do you agree with the community's calls for such a response? And if so, how would you see it resourced and funded?
So this is funded already. It's funded through a regional, on a regional basis. So we're working with all the councils in the region because the whole issue of climate change is affecting the whole region. We're doing this all together. And it has to be all together. It has to be businesses, council and households that get involved in this plan. And the research that's going to come out will affect all of us. But if we can do our part now to lower our carbon emissions and do those little bits that Petra was talking about, we will lower the emissions and it will stop the huge cost that is going to be to do any adaptive measures that people are asking for, perhaps like building a wall at Patoni to stop the sea level rise, things like that. I don't know what people mean by, I don't think they know what it is that's coming at them. But the thing that they can do is stop and do the little things every day to lower emissions and not make the effect so bad on the next generation. And it might be happening in our generation. We've already seen a lot of effects happening in this last winter. And coming into spring, we, yeah, things can happen. So if people make their steps now, we can progress the whole thing and stop the big impacts.
Okay, what box number, Petra?
Thirteen.
Okay, question number four on the question sheet. What are you going to do to stop rate rises going up and up faster than wages?
This is a big problem and a question I have been asked repeatedly about whilst I've been out and about. The current council has increased its rates and they take by 30% over the last three years. And the long-term plan is for rates to more than double, with the justification being the increased cost is to pay for more infrastructure. But when you look at the actual spending, this is not where the big increases are so far. It is critical to review current and forecast expenditure of the council budget and bring spending back under control.
Okay, Tui, what box number?
Number two, please.
Number two.
Number two.
Okay, on the question sheet, number 16. What are you doing to ensure young people's voices are heard and actioned to keep our city vibrant and growing? Feels weird me saying that as a Wellingtonian.
What am I going to do? Well, it's being about being out in the community. But at council, we're already doing things like that. We've got a connected communities programme that does include Rangatahi. And we're also looking to address in the new year, we used to have a youth council at city, and to revitalise that youth council. But it's finding out what they need first and what they actually want. So that is one of the approaches. But being out in the community, you soon find out what the kids want and what the youth want. So, yeah, that's what we're doing.
Give her a round of applause. Last night, we had a round of applause after every single question was answered. So I want to achieve, see if we can achieve that tonight again. What box number, Petra?
Nine, please.
I like it how you both remember the mics. Was it Wednesday or Tuesday night? One of them that, it was like, the box numbers, they never sit on the mic. Can't remember which one is. There's been so many shows. Wednesday. Yeah, okay. Okay, on the question sheet, number seven. What will you do for people with invisible disabilities in the community to use playgrounds, use public spaces, etc., and feel part of the Hutt city?
I'm glad I've got this question. This is a question that's very dear to my heart. I am a strong advocate for equity. And I put an equity lens over every decision I make and every question that is asked of me. I have experienced inequity many times during my career in the health sector. I have learnt it is important to get, to engage and consult. There's a concept, consult. Consult the people with invisible disabilities and any disability in the community to determine what would enable them to feel part of the city and how they use public spaces. One way that I heard from a local resident, when I was out and about walking recently, was what she would really like to see for her disabled child was the opportunity to be able to go to some of the large open public events, perhaps just a little bit earlier than everybody else. So they had the opportunity to wander around and experience the joy and the fun of things without the huge crowds arriving a little bit later on. And I thought that was a really nice idea. And that's the sort of thing we should be listening to and applying as representatives of the community as councillors. Thank you.
Okay, what box number, Tui?
Three, thank you.
No problem. Okay, question five on the question sheet. What will you do to deal with the latest bad results from the staff satisfaction survey at the Hutt City Council?
We've had some great results with the staff survey. 80% return rate, this last one we've had. And that engagement is very important. It does give direction to the council and the team, what's needed in the council staff. So to get that result is fantastic. And it's the first time we've ever And it's the first time we've ever gone into actually being transparent and showing everybody how the council gets on and the staff are operating. So it's great.
Thank you. Okay, Petra, what box number?
Number four.
Well, thank you for saving me walking around. Okay, question number twenty-six on the question sheet. With the recent slip in Wanui Mata trapping people in the suburbs, how will you help that community get a second alternative route to Wanui Mata? And will you aim to have it in the long-term plan?
Thank you. With Wanui Mata being not part of the Harbour Ward, I would first and foremost work with the Wanui Mata Ward councillor who has far more knowledge than I would have on the area and what is required there. And I would, and the rest of the council, obviously. But to support any business case that provides an updated analysis of need and good design that would improve travel options in and out of Wanui Mata, it would require a significant government funding for any improvements to be affordable because as far as I'm aware, we're all tapped out in terms of finding any more money for any other projects.
Okay, next up, Tui, what box number?
Twenty-one.
Yes, I wonder, shame I don't have the pedometer on me, otherwise I could sit there and work out how many steps I can clock up from doing this role. Maybe that should be a goal. Oh, thanks for reminding. Okay, so question number nine on the question sheet. How will you provide for our community to get around in healthy, low-carbon and low-cost means that enable our city to halve our transport emissions by 2030?
Well, sixty-seven percent of our population actually lives within a twenty-minute walk of our city. So what we're planning for the city is to have better improved roads and footpaths, mainly the footpaths. There is funding put aside for that and we need to have, you know, urban design into the environment we're living and we can do it close to the city centre. That's where we need to do our intensification and improve it and, you know, get the low-carbon, low-cost means happening and everybody out walking.
Thank you. Okay, Petra, what's your box number?
Five, please.
Okay, question number two on the question card. What are your priorities to work on for the next three years if elected?
I'm going to start to sound like a broken record here.
At least you're honest about it.
We need to restore control of spending and stop excessive rate rises. We need to re-engage with our communities and genuinely consult on issues that directly affect them. I believe we need to ensure that there is a process of communicating back to the community in a way that is easy for the people to find the information and in a way that is relatable and easy for them to understand. We really need to review the operations of the council with regards to services. In some areas, they are not meeting statutory requirements. Approval of building consents is a prime example of this.
Okay, what box number, Tui?
Twenty-seven.
Okay, question number fourteen on the question card. Would you bring in household food waste collection to stop this from going to landfill? I have a feeling that might already be there.
Yes, definitely. Food waste collection is something that is a high priority for council. It's going to add to the great three bins service that we've already started and this is saving our landfill. Having food collected from your home, the spend that we have at food waste is over eight hundred million dollars New Zealand-wide. So to have, if we can stop that sort of thing happening, stop the methane and the greenhouse emissions, having it collected from your door would help. But the first thing is we've got to stop the waste, don't throw things away.
Okay, Petra, what box number?
Number one.
I jinxed that. It's all right, while we're talking on the word jinx, it's on the question sheet, it's also number one. Are you a current member of any political party and has your campaign received any support from a political party, including access to voter databases and volunteers?
No.
Okay, Tui, what's next box number?
Number eleven, thank you.
Okay, question number three on the question card. Why should I vote for you? No political jargon, please.
No political jargon. This is going to be interesting. I actually text somebody and asked them, why would you vote for me? Because I thought, how do you say that about yourself? I'm a passionate person. I can say things about myself, but you do get embarrassed, still do after three terms on council. So this person said why they would vote for me. I have a proven track record. It shows clearly that I have community connections and I work for my community. They do watch me quite closely, this particular person, hence the question was fired at them. I'm approachable, I listen and I do care for our community. And I work closely with both community boards in the ward and I'm an integral, integrical part of that community board. Integrity to me is the main thing. It's my biggest drive and doing the right thing by everybody in the community. So that's why you should vote for me. And this person also said, if you ask her husband, she's never home, I have to cook tea now, so.
So what sort of fantastic meals are left over for when you come back late at night after the latest Resonance Association meeting?
Yeah, well, fried rice.
Okay, Petra, what box number?
I'm going to make you walk now, twenty-eight.
Okay, question number eight on the question sheet. What will you bring to this, what will you bring that is different from the current leadership?
I have been a senior leader for a number of years now and my style of leadership is that of servant leadership. I believe in leading by example. I believe that the teams that I work with, I am there to serve. I am there to serve them to ensure that they are working to the best of their ability and that they are working at the top of their scope and I would support them if they weren't. For me, what I always say to my teams are it's really important that we're all on the right seat on the bus. Because if everybody's on the right seat on the bus with the right skills and the right skill sets and support, organisations hum along. And that's always worked for me and it's a mantra that I stand by. As a leader, I am also very experienced in managing conflict. I am an associate mediator with the Resolution Institute. So I'm very good at handling difficult situations and enabling people to work together collaboratively without conflict. Thank you.
Okay, what box number, Tui?
Number nineteen, please.
Okay, number eleven on the question sheet. What's your biggest priority for the next term and how do you tend on delivering it? Delivering that is what it says.
Delivering my priorities. Going to stay focused, especially on our climate change policies. We've declared a climate emergency in 2019 and the target is for our council to reduce the emissions. So that is a major focus of the whole council. And as I said earlier, it has to be everybody's. With councils' projects, we now have a climate change focus across all our policies and across all the projects that we actually do. So the next one I'd really like to get going is the Cross Valley Connection and all modes, putting a mode shift across the way we get around our city. So we need streets that are for people, neighbourhoods that are for people and incorporating urban planning and spatial design in all that we do. So major focuses.
Okay, thank you. What box number, Petra?
Twelve, please.
Okay, question number twenty-two on the question sheet. In your view, is central government overloading councils with regulation and legislation?
There's no doubt that there's been a lot of challenges for council with a lot of recent mandates coming with increased housing and historical homes being imposed on them. But, and that is outside of control on many levels. But what can be done by councillors to push back and do their best to listen to what the community has to say about that and make an effort to represent the communities that they are there and standing with.
Thank you. Okay, what box number, Tui?
Is number ten available?
I don't think it is, I think it's been gone. No, no, I've got eight and it jumps up to fourteen.
Okay, let's go fourteen.
I'm going to have to ask the question person, see if we can remove this from future shows. Question seventeen. Dog owners in Christchurch have been issued with a lifelong metal disc engraved with their pet's unique identification number from June 2022, under a change to dog registration to help the environment and save money. Do you think Hut City Council should adopt the policy? I have a feeling.
We've already done it.
Okay, Petra, what box number?
Fifteen, please.
And I'll be honest, the last set of questions I moderated were regional council ones because that tends to be, they're harder ones to moderate. Yeah, a lot of people seem to not know what responsible we are, including we've had about three questions submitted to Hut City Council councillors about buses, which are not really helpful, but they've been transferred to the regional council shows. Okay, question number twenty-one on the sheet. Water is precious and needed resource. Should councils make it compulsory for houses to install water tank storage for watering their gardens and/or offer tank storage at a discounted price?
No, I don't think councils should make this compulsory. I think there are enough charges imposed on the ratepayer already and it would be very hard, if not impossible, to implement. I would, however, engage with a water tank company to negotiate for a preferred provider to offer a low-cost access to water tank storage for Hut City residents. Residents who can install water tanks will also help alleviate flooding and heavy rain as the water would flow into the tanks.
Okay, Tui, what box number?
Number twenty, please.
And I feel like we're giving you very educated answers here. Of other meet candidates, have you had these sorts of questions asked?
No, they don't go down this line normally, do they?
Sorry, I wasn't listening, what did you say?
For other meet candidates, do you get these sorts of questions asked? Number twenty-four on the question sheet. Should councils be forced to treat their portable water with fluoride? I think it was Petra, yeah.
Oh, sorry, what number question was it?
Fluoride, I do beg your pardon, sorry, momentary distraction there. Sorry about that. No, councils shouldn't be forced to treat their water with fluoride. However, this is a pretty contentious question because with the Three Waters Reform, who knows what councils would be able to impose or not impose? And this is something that is important and something that we do need to be aware of. However, you know, fluoride isn't a bad thing to have in water either. It's naturally in the sea, in the soil, in the food that we eat. And it's actually good to prevent tooth decay, especially for children and Maori in Pacifica and other vulnerable people in our community. So that's my personal stand on it. But if a community feels strongly enough about it, then I don't have a problem with that either, but with the Three Waters, who knows?
Thank you. Okay, what box number, Tui?
Twenty-nine.
Okay, question ten on the question sheet. Should social housing first be offered to those who are local? Okay, this is a different wording of the way that I've seen that question go around.
Social housing, yes, definitely offered to locals first. Currently with council, we're working with Kaingora and their projects and we're also working with Nati Kahanunu Social Services, it's a chip, and in conjunction with our CCO Urban Plus and Providing Houses. So it's something that's happening in the Hut, but we just can't do it fast enough.
Okay. Petra, what box number?
Sixteen, please.
Okay, number twenty-five on the question sheet. Do you support more housing in your ward and if so, how would you see this achieved?
There is a housing crisis. We need more housing. But we need to be careful. We have extremely unhelpful rules being imposed on council by central government, such as no requirement for car parks, for example. We must push back on these rules and make sure we are not creating the ghettos of tomorrow. It is important to consider all elements of what good housing looks like, including covered areas, green spaces for families to enjoy and car parks somewhere within the vicinity. Thank you.
Okay, what box number, Tui?
Seventeen.
It's all right, we can now see the TV screen. But we're making good progress on box numbers.
We're going so smooth, we might be out early, guys.
I didn't really want this to happen. You've got dodge the question. That's all right. So what box, what replacement box number would you like to pick?
Twenty-five, thank you.
It's all right, Paul William Wood of the Palmer's North Show back in 2020 got three of them when we had four in the boxes and he got two of them in a row. At least we don't have that happening this time round. Okay, so question number twelve. What are your thoughts on Hut City shifting to the voting system using single transferable vote instead of first past the post?
I've got mixed feelings on this. For a single transferable vote, I think if you're picking one, like going for your mayor, no, sorry, for first past the post, if you're just running for the mayor, the first past the post would win. But if there's a, like, citywide election, single transferable vote could be quite helpful. So people have to do their homework before they cast their votes and find out how the system works. And currently, that question is in the latest papers coming to you on the sixteenth.
Okay. Thank you, audience. Petra, what box number?
Number six.
Okay, question number twenty on the question sheet. Climate change is one of our biggest threats. What will you personally do to role model decarbonisation?
Sorry, I have a very small carbon footprint anyway. I recycle, I support organisations that make reducing carbon emissions their priority. Next time, when I save up to upgrade my car, it will be electric. And I shop locally, which supports my community at the same time. And I shop locally, which supports my community at the same time.
What type of electric vehicle would you be after? Your Leaf or are you wanting a Tesla?
I have absolutely no clue. I'm not really big on cars, they get me from A to B when I need them, and that's as far as it goes.
Well, there's one downside, when you get an electric car, say goodbye to the clutch.
I haven't used a clutch for ages, I use a, I'm an automatic.
I don't know, I've been driving manual since I was 15, including the van out there is manual. Um, Tui, what box number?
26, thank you.
I'd hate to know what I'd like to drive down the Wainoa Mata Hill in the automatic and leaving in drive though. But maybe that's just me who's driven manual for years, used to the gears. Okay, so question number 13 on the question sheet. Wellington City Council has committed to normalising Tareo Maori. Would you commit to doing the saying for Hut City?
Yeah, Wellington City have taken the lead in this policy and commitment to Tareo Maori. And Hut City thankfully is following that lead as well. So we're coming in a close second to Wellington, but we're speeding up and getting everything into Tareo. And including we're looking at revisiting things like the Bullcot Memorial, looking at how Maori were involved in that whole event. And, you know, paying tribute to the whole history of that area. So, yeah, we have got to focus, it's wonderful.
Okay, Petra, what box number?
Number 7.
Ah, this is a long one. Many bus stops in La Hut are not at the required 15 metre entry taper, a 15 metre marked bus stop, and a 9 metre tapered exit to ensure all bus stops are compliant with both Waikato Tahi requirements and GWRC's accessibility charter to allow for buses to kneel for those passengers who need it. Some of these non-compliant bus stops have car parks right up to the bus stop on both sides. If you had to make the decision, would you remove the car parks and make the bus stop compliant, which might be against the community's wishes, or leave the bus stop as non-compliant?
I think my answer is shorter than the question. And this isn't a question that one person should make. But I think it is vital that bus stops are compliant and accessible for all, and this is through my equity lens. I would work with Greater Wellington Regional Council and consult with the affected residents and houses about how best to ensure the buses are able to safely enter and exit a bus stop, whilst finding solutions with the local residents, to ensure the removal of parking is well managed and considered. Each compliant bus stop would need to be addressed on a case by case basis. There is no one size fits all for this problem.
Many of these bus stops are in Jackson Street. It's recently been very contentious of your Chris Bishop. Okay, Tui, what box number?
Number 30 please.
Okay, question number 28 on the question sheet. The entry into Stokes Valley is no longer fit for purpose, given the increase in population and traffic into the valley. It is chronically bottlenecked, vulnerable to flooding, accidents and is indirect, so wastes petrol. Will you help Northern Ward councillors to gain a direct on off access to the motorway from Stokes Valley? Well, it's technically an expressway, but yes.
This would be ideal, working with the Northern Ward councillors is an easy one. Gaining access to the motorway for Stokes Valley is ideal as well. But it will take time and it's gonna need a lot of money. And it will have to come from central government. Council has committed $20 million to work with the problems we have at the moment on the eastern hut road for Stokes Valley. But $20 million isn't gonna go for an access way over to the motorway, sorry.
Okay, what box number Petra?
Oh, the one I can see, 22.
Okay, question number 18 on the question sheet. Better find the right, get the right screen on the tablet. Should councils be funding and organising community events?
Yes. Super important for councils to support and fund community events. This is vital to the vibrancy of our community. The Carnival of Lights event back in 2019 was a huge success, and it really brought the city together. I don't know why, maybe I haven't heard, but I haven't seen any more events like this that have been planned or in the pipeline.
I think it was called COVID.
You still have things planned.
Okay, Tui, what box number?
Uh, number 8, thank you.
I do remember the fun part that happened with Newtown Festival in COVID. It was a bit sad to not have a 2022 show. Okay, question number 6 on the question sheet. Maori make up 20% of La Hut's populations. What are your views on creating a Maori ward and having fair representation for Tanga Tafenua in Te Awa Karangi? I hope I said that right, God, I felt like a tongue twister there.
Yes, she did. Um, the Maori wards is something that we are going to be doing a representation review, that's coming up. And we had to, what, in talking in our partnership with Tanga Tafenua, Nati Toa and Te Awa, both have expressed their happiness in working with council, the partnership we have going, and they're quite content at the moment in this working relationship. So it'll be something that comes up for review, but we'll be working closely with our Iwi partners.
Now Petra, what box number?
23 please.
I think we've been doing that at lightning speed tonight. Okay, question number 15 on the question card. Internationally, cities are the, cities that are nicer places to walk around are considered better places to live. What will you do to improve the experience of pedestrians in the Harbour Wood, such as wider footpaths, less on-street parking, more green spaces, and protection from the wind and rain?
No rates rises.
Uh, Harbour Wood is the jewel and the crown of Hut City. We already are abundant with open spaces and footpaths on the Esperance and Patoni. We have wonderful parks, river walks, bushwalks, just to mention a few. The shared pathway is a good start to further improve the experience of pedestrians along the eastern bays. We could however, learn some valuable lessons on some of the innovative ways other cities around the world are implementing within their communities. Speaking with some people, just last night actually, you know, there's some really clever people in our community that can really contribute and add value to our spaces. One, one that came across in a family dinner last night was, why don't we develop, design some wind sculptures and use those to power the lights in the bus stops? Isn't that a great idea?
Certainly would love to see it, and I do know, I do know Esperance does have a lot more lit bus stops than probably the bulk of Wellington. Because I do know that when I lived in Kintala, they were pitch black at night. And you couldn't even tell someone was in them. Yeah, okay, so we're gonna take a break. We're gonna let our audience get to meet our candidates and have a good, good one. And we'll see you after the break for hard hitting questions.
Okay, now with Hart... I think we're having fun with the mute key, Ray. This is what happens when, you know, Ray turns it on, I turn it off and then, yeah, get the gist of it. So with hard-hitting questions there, these are the questions that many members of the community have repeatedly submitted for in the question submission line, so we throw them to all candidates. Now with the theme of 'It's in the ballot', we decided this election, Free Waters Reform is one that we're going to ask for every single show. So let's kick off with hard-hitting question number one. What is your position on free waters reform and why have you come to that position? Let's start off with Tui.
Okay, Three Waters. We know the state of our infrastructure here in the hut. We've had, we've been under Wellington Water for a long time now, and that's been running really well. The funding for Three Waters hasn't been enough in our own city. So having Three Waters reform come along, and the idea is that we're going to be an entity C, which is a combination of councils. The idea is great, there's money coming in from the government to support that, so we're no better, no worse off, sorry, not better off, no worse off. But for me personally, I think we cannot afford to keep funding the Three Waters infrastructure. We've got, the assessment that was just done recently was $1.3 billion is needed over the next 30 years for our city. So rates funding is not going to cover that sort of cost. So Three Waters coming along at this time is a good thing to be looking at as the reform, and I think we should at least look and go with it and fine-tune it on the way. It has to be something that is fine-tuned because it's new, and like anything else that is a change, you have to just work with it and make sure it works for your city. So I do agree with it.
Okay, Petra.
There has been a lot of controversy about this reform, and I personally do believe there needs to be some sort of reform. Local accountability means local communities have to invest large amounts of money in maintaining and replacing existing services, and investing in additional new services where required. A change of ownership of these assets as proposed by the Three Waters reform would mean those assets are out of our hands forever. We would never be able to afford to buy them back. We still don't know who will oversee these new entities and the level of control they would have over local water. A good example of this that I mentioned earlier this evening is the Patoni and Koro Koro who recently opposed having fluoride in their water. Locally, we have not had a democratic, sorry, debate about this. I would advocate strongly for this debate and consultation to occur.
Okay, now let's fire for hard-hitting question number two. What is your position on the $199 million Cross Valley Link project, and would you be supporting or opposing it in the long-term plan? Let's start off with Petra.
It's a shame that this is even a question. This is a critical project, and it should be much further on than it is. So yes, I definitely support this project. It will make a massive difference to how we move around the city, by car, bus, bike, foot, scooter, however you get around. The Cross Valley Link would be a huge asset to the Harbour Ward as it will reduce congestion and make the Espinada safer, quieter, and more enjoyable space.
Okay, Tui.
Same question.
Yes, yep, that's how hard-hitting questions work.
Thank you. So this, we finally put money into the budget for the Cross Valley connection, it hadn't been there for the last few years on council, the last few terms, and the work is starting and progressing. And with the government's help in the Waka Koutahi space, we should be able to get traction with this project. It is a multi, it is going to be a multimodal project, and in conjunction with, if you can imagine a service-like route being created like that, that would carry services of water and everything to, from the Western Hills, it will be a multi-purpose build. So there's lots of work to be done in that space, and to get the city moving better, as Petra said, multimodal it has to be, and the other thing is putting a climate change lens right across this project, we will be able to measure where the emissions are going, and if we can improve that as well, that's our objective.
Now, we made a bit of a balls-up on hard-hitting question number three, so we've taken one from one of our online audiences, and the question goes, okay, why isn't there a community board, why isn't there community boards throughout the city? And the whole city needs a voice, but at the moment, there are only four community boards. I think that might actually only be three, but hey, you know, that's fine, it's actually only three community boards. So I wonder if that person is wondering whether there should be a community board in each ward? We've got a representation review coming up in the next term, so, I mean, Tui, would you like to kick off, what would, what would be, well, how would you approach that?
Thank you, and you are right, it is done through representation review, so the public get their chance to say if they want a board, and then this time round with the representation review, it is going to be an independent person assessing, you know, the outcome of that consultation. So last time we did it, there was on the table the opportunity to have community boards in other wards. The reason why we have only three is in the 89 reformation with local government, where we lost, sorry, where Patoni, Eastbourne and Wan Yew Mata all joined up with Lower Hut, and as a sort of, this is how we're going to communicate with you, you're allowed to have your boards to represent you into the city as well, so that's how we got those boards. But yes, I agree, community boards would be valuable throughout our city, we do need more of the community voice, and for me, working with both Eastbourne and Patoni Community Board, they do a lot of the mahi, they do a lot of the grunt into the community, and we work together as a team, so that voice comes to the table as well. So they feed into policies, they have, you know, put in submissions and everything that the council's doing, and it is a great way to represent the city.
Yeah, I agree with Tui on that, that local communities need a forum with which is the, there is structure for them to advocate for the needs of the wider population of communities. However, I wonder if there is a better way of doing it and welcome the reform that is currently underway. I wonder about the cost of those community boards, and where they sit within the current expenses that is happening around everything within our city. Is it a wise use of funding? That's an answer that some people won't like, and I'm sorry about that, but I think, you know, we have to be a little bit smarter and a little bit more savvy with the money, and I'm afraid that's something that really should be seriously considered, in my view.
Okay, we have a good chunk of time left, so we would like some questions from the audience, please. Who would like to put up their hand? And sorry for those at home, we do not have named chyrons to appear on the screen. I'm not seeing any hands going up. So what curveball question have you got? I'm trying to think, where, how do we get you? Yeah, you're on camera. Yep, no, no, you're on that camera. Yeah, yeah, I forgot we had that camera there.
Tui, and I do also work in the energy industry, so I'll declare that too as an interest. Tui, you mentioned that the council is putting climate change across everything, and I see in the 10-year plan published that on page 48, there's $7 million being spent to take natural gas heating out of all council pools and facilities and buildings. How much carbon reduction do you expect from that $7 million? I have a follow-up question to that too, probably.
It's going to be easy, I'm going to pass because I don't know the answer to that, I don't go into that sort of detail. This is a policy that we've just started putting across, and that's only just begun, so that measuring that is going to be quite hard as well, but it is in the paperwork somewhere, but I don't have it off the top of my head, sorry.
And that's a fair answer too. And I had to do a bit of research on this myself, even though I do work in the industry, so I guess I have potentially an advantage in that.
So you came prepared?
I did come prepared, yeah, and that's meant respectfully. So, but just the basic principle being that carbon at the moment is a tradable item, it's $82 a tonne, so 7 million should produce something like... So 7 million should produce something like 850,000 tonnes of carbon emissions. So if the city can get that from a $7 million investment, that's a wise prudent financial decision. I suspect it's going to get nothing near that. So it's a poor decision. And the money would be better probably spent in more EV charging stations. And I know that there are money allocated for EV charging stations, electric buses, or other ways of reducing carbon. It's, it's not a great decision, I've got to say.
Okay, well, the officers will be able to answer your question and give you more detail on that, Dave.
Thanks, Tui, appreciate that. Thank you. You gonna ask one for Petra? You gonna ask one for Petra?
Yeah, hi. This is a question to both candidates in that we've been talking about infrastructure. One, how do we improve the infrastructure? Since we've got very old infrastructure, with our water and our pipes and there's a number of areas like where we are in Waifu Two South that continually flood. How are we going to improve that? If we don't spend more money on rates or some other form of funding? For instance, maybe if we got something through local government in New Zealand with some of their ideas on where they can get funding to help the councils or some other funding through private? How are we going to afford that now? So our Mokapunas don't continue paying for it later on?
So who would like to start off?
I'll go first. Thank you, thank you for your question. And I've, I've heard a lot from council that the rates have been used or are planned to be used to fix the infrastructure, but I have yet to see where that is, where that is happening. There's a question that's been asked a number of times now about $120 million in the budget that has not been answered of what, for operating overheads. I'm really interested to know, Tui, if you could answer that question.
I think the question was from the floor for rates on infrastructure, Petra, so.
But I'm asking if there's $120 million, it would be good to use that for infrastructure. And that's about being smart by reviewing the budgets and wondering by line by line and wondering where that money is going and could that be better used to go to infrastructure?
Yes, we could move money around from everywhere and pay for infrastructure, but other things would suffer. So for the $120 million that apparently has gone missing from our budget, it has gone to our back services and putting the staff that was needed to fulfil the duties and the roles that were needed in council to follow out the plan that we put in place for the next 10 years.
The other thing to work out, how frequently would going line by line on the budget go through there? Because each time you go through it, that could take up time, working out the costs of what they are. So how, what frequency would that be appropriately used?
Every year you're supposed to go through a budget to review it. That's common business practice and I would hope that that's what the council is doing. You need someone with good financial experience and business acumen and commercial nous to be able to make sure that those budgets are being reviewed properly by a professional. I don't profess to be an accountant, but I can read a P and L and I can read lines of a budget and see where things are going wrong within it.
And the one thing I love is read the footnotes. They always bring out some very glorious details.
Yes, that's how we found out the $120 million wasn't invested previously. So we've had to put it in.
Okay. You've just asked one. Good point.
Thank you. Thank you. So how the infrastructure and fixing up the pipes is going to be covered? That is the dilemma we're all going to face and it will be a conversation around our rates. Our rates at the moment are the lowest in the region. Our rates in the moment are under inflation, currently set under inflation. So the conversation has to be had around how do we cope with the rates? How do we cope with the infrastructure not being up to standard as we grow this city? So the conversation definitely has to be had. We are not going to be putting up rates, they will be affordable. And saying they're not going up, they will go up. But the conversation has to be around how much do they go up? How much can people afford? And that is one thing our council is very conscious of, of doing the right thing by the people.
Okay, we have a question online and the question goes, do you support maintaining the living wage accreditation at the council?
Personally, yes, we are a living wage accredited employee and employer, sorry. And that is helping all our staff. So everybody that comes to council is on the living wage and yeah, totally support it and wish more people would be part of it.
Petra.
Yes, I'm with Tui on this one. I absolutely support maintaining the living wage at council.
Okay, and we've got some more questions from the audience. At least I like the honesty. But also, well, let's make it where they, where they aim to be at both candidates. So then we get good answers from both. Because that's the principle behind It's in the Ballot.
My question is, what is your visions for Patoni and the Harbour Ward over the next 10 to 15 years?
Thank you for your question. My, my vision, my vision for the Harbour Ward and Patoni over the next 10 years is to make sure that it is future-proofed and sustainable and that we manage climate change as best, as best we can. We need to be clever about that, we need to collaborate and we need to work together. I've said it before earlier this evening, there are some very clever people in our community and we need to listen to them. They've got some great ideas. And I think if we listen and take that back as a team within council that we can implement and be clever with how we do things without spending a lot of money. I think the working, establishing networks of local experts, distinguished experts that we have in our community that have huge respect and are at the top of their game in these areas of climate change and beautifying the city. I could go on all night about this, but I think I've probably said enough for now. Thank you.
We all know that the Harbour Ward is the jewel in Hut City's crown and the beach front for me is very important. I think we need to reclaim that for a recreational space. And by having things like the Cross Valley Connection go in, that's going to be a resistance road as well for this community. By taking the traffic off, we can have wider recreational buffer. We've got the cycle way coming through from Patoni to Naoranga. So coming across, connecting the Great Harbour Way is where Patoni's opportunity lies. And now with the shared pathway for Eastbourne happening, we've got such great tourism potential coming. And we just need to follow the plan that Patoni 2040 did, which was a spatial plan for this area and Moira, to get everybody connected, to get them on the River Trail. And we need to start following the things that we have done with over two years of consultation with our community to see that vision. So that's something that is going to be a focus of mine as well for the coming election, for the coming triennium, sorry.
On a lighter note, what is your favourite coffee shop? And what type of coffee do you drink? As a barista myself, I'm very interested to find out. So, you know, let's find a more personalised approach on this one.
Spoilt for choice, you're in Patoni and in Eastbourne. Most coffee shops here in our city, in our ward are serving primo coffee. You can't go wrong. So favourites, I could go to one every day, different one. I don't though, because it is getting a bit pricey. Yeah, I think they're all very good and depends on what sort of bean you like.
You said it was on a lighter note, this is one of the hardest questions of the night. Coffee's really important. I love my coffee and I go to so many, I do like to spread it around a little bit. I have my favourite small batch on my way to work in the morning is a great coffee. I always, I said, I stated earlier in my carbon footprint, I shop locally, so I buy coffee locally in Eastbourne. Gosh, the list goes on.
Kekap?
Ah, yes, yes, I've got one of those, yes. I've got one of these too, for water.
Okay, I'm trying to think, have we got another audience question? Otherwise we, I can ask another coffee one.
Some people have talked tonight about the need for more effective community consultation. What is your idea, vision for what effective community consultation looks like?
Do you want me to go first? Okay, I'll go first. Effective community consultation to me is reaching out to all of the community groups, schools, social events, cultural communities, and actually asking them the questions of how we can communicate together, how we can collaborate together and then getting, feeding that information back in a communication, communication tree, I call them really, to make sure that the structure about that and things don't get lost. It's important that the information is captured and recorded and respectfully replied to.
Communicating with our community is, there's so many methods to get in touch with people these days, but one of the best ways is face to face. So getting out in the community for me is very important. At council, we've got our connected communities now, which are based in the communities, out of the libraries. And we do take ideas, anyone can connect with council and drop ideas and, and through consultation as well. We had over 30 major consultations in the last triennium, which is huge. And for having community, like as you mentioned, consulting directly with community, it does bring, it does mean bringing the community together. And that's a hard thing too nowadays, but getting people out of their homes after COVID. So we are very innovative in connecting and it's just so many ways and it's just gathering that data and that is something the council is proactively doing.
Now, one thing I want to ask, because being, was it, would be being a councillor is a little, you know, there are different commitments and all that sort of thing. Tui, being the city councillor might be slightly different to Petra, but what other employment would you be doing concurrently while serving as the term as a councillor? What other concurrent employment, like do you have a day job that you might not leave? You've got a business you absolutely love that you just don't want to part with? That sort of, that sort of thing, you know? Are there other commitments in that day job? And how will you balance it between the two?
Okay, for me, I'm a third term councillor and picking up the role of deputy mayor this last term, it just meant I had a bit more on my plate, so I needed to be out. So prior to that, I was working at home with my husband, we have our own business. And my background, as I said before, oh, sorry, said in my profiles and things, I was in sales, hospitality and that sort of field and I did that for well over 20 years. But yeah, I think it takes a personality to, every personality handles the role so differently. So we've got councillors now that can work, they're very clever, they can do two jobs and do counselling. But everybody's different in the way they handle it, yeah.
Petra.
Thank you. Yes, I appreciate being a councillor is a huge role and requires an awful lot of commitment. Currently, I am self-employed and I have the luxury and the privilege of being able to scale up or scale down that work as required. I plan my work very carefully and work that's in the pipeline, I am also able to delegate to other consultants as required.
Thank you for that, that's useful. And there's been many people at home probably wondering the same thing. So we've delved into it and I can personally relate to that because my self-employment has been slightly scaled back to make It's in the Ballot happen. So, you know, I know that personally, I know that, know that feeling very well. Now, can we? Yes, yes, yeah, raising the same boat as well. Now, have we got any more questions from the audience?
Is it wine o'clock?
Pinot or Merlot or Savio Blanc?
All three at the moment or two at the moment.
Can we have a hand up from the audience? Who's the sober driver? Oh, so we're all getting drunk now. I was hoping someone was going to be sober driving me home with this very nice sounding wine. Okay, well, we will get to closing statements. Petra, would you like to start off with your closing statement on why the voters of Harbour Ward should give you their tick?
Thank you. Thank you very much for organising this evening. It's been fun, I have to admit, I have enjoyed it. My closing statement is to say, I hope you have learnt a little bit more about me tonight by answering some of these questions and who I am, what I stand for and why I'm standing. I'm very passionate about the community that I live and work in and it would be an honour and a privilege to stand as your Harbour Ward councillor, should I be successful. I have mentioned before that I'm, I'm new to politics, but I don't see this as a disadvantage, I see this as an advantage. I am new, I have fresh ideas, I don't have any baggage. I look things from a different approach, from a business management approach. I have commercial nous and business acumen and I do believe that this would add value and be an asset to the council table. I'm also young at heart, thank you.
Well, congratulations, Petra, for putting your hand up to stand. It does, it takes a lot to put your hand up to serve the community. So, and the young at heart part I do like, I think that really helps in this role. So moving forward for another three years, I would value the vote of people in the Harbour Ward. I would like to represent you again as your hardworking councillor and bring my experience of three terms to carry on the next term. And yeah, I would value your support. So you all know me and I just thank you very much for your continued support. Thank you.
Okay. Now, it's that time of night on a little bit of the early end. I'm trying to find my lovely little sheet that tells me exactly the shows. There we are. That's what happens when you scroll past a bit too fast on your phone. Okay. So tomorrow night, we have a special show for the Upper Hutsey councillors for Yarap, Ramel and Tracy, who were meant to be part of Tuesday's night's show, but wasn't. Will be joining, you can join us tomorrow at 7pm for a remote show, which will be fun because I'll begin to do that from my own house and we will be doing that from home instead, it's going to be a bit different. Now, if we head across for next, was it for Sunday? We've got the Pokahina Lantern Ward Show at the St Mark's School Hall, just to be a little bit more confusing. And while, and then on the Monday, we've got the Greater Wellington Regional Council, Poniki Wellington constituency, one in the St Mark's School Chapel, which is round by the Basin Reserve in Wellington. And then on Tuesday, we have got the Tafanganui Atara, I said it right, Stacey? Yeah, Maori Ward, where Stacey will be hosting. You know, throw a bit of a change there and she can sit there and roll up, well, I can vote for you, you know, that sort of thing. And then on Wednesday, we've got the Capiti Coast Merrill Tea Race at the Capiti Impact Hub. Well, we were there last night, so we're going to be back there again. And then for next Thursday, we've got Central Ward Hut City Council at the Hut Musical Theatre in Eponi. So, you know, we've got a few shows on there that you can watch online and for our audience members to track on down, following, following, shall we say, the It's in the Ballot Road Show, you can call it. Yeah, I haven't done that. Can I thank you both, Tu'i and Petra, for coming tonight and creating another 100% candidate's attendance rate? Hut City seems to be good at doing that. Last night, we had a 50% attendance rate for a two-horse race. Yeah, yeah, yes, yes. Yeah. Thank you to Stacey and Ray, who are here in studio, and for Eddie and Paul, who not here tonight, but are doing things behind the scenes to keep things afloat. It's been a very interesting 24 hours. And it's not been easy to have your graphics person out of action, plus one of your remote editors out of action at the same time. But we wish both of them well in getting there. I'm pretty sure we'll have both of them back in action by Tuesday. And thank you to the audience for coming back out again. I see some familiar faces. And, but I look forward to doing, seeing you all as we go through the campaign. So we'll see you for tomorrow's special and for the big one on Sunday at 7pm. Have a good evening.